So they paid out for that and then I just bought them.
Water on both sides is just about.
About same things, I like it. Yeah, that's the same thing, almost the same thing. But I like it.
All right. Welcome everybody to the Select Board meeting. May first.
I know, and I like.
We start as we normally do. I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And myself, Dave Hemmern, chair of the Select Board.
Marlon Harris.
Normandy Blink.
All right, and that will run us into announcements before I go through status stuff. Did you have any announcements to make?
I have a quick announcement. Governor Sanunu has proclaimed this week as Town Clerk Weeks. And I thought that was nice. And since we have a brand-new town clerk, and I know what it is not to have one. I'm very much appreciative of the town clerk and all that.
Absolutely.
He or she does.
Very good thing to have in a town. And thank you very much to those who have been the town clerk and our new town clerk, who is doing fabulous as well. All right. Any further announcements?
No, can't think of anything.
All right, so I will move quickly into the status, which I included as part of that. This normally gets put up on the website, so if it's not there, you'll see it shortly. So White Plains Bridge, unfortunately, it's a little bit behind, but it is being installed as everybody has probably seen the road being closed. Maybe, and it will have an update for us a little bit later. But basically, the lovely weather and rain delayed them a bit, so they're still finishing that up. But we should have a road there by the end of the week at the latest. Closepin Bridge, not much has changed there. The required training has been completed by our town administrator, so that's going to be great there. The next thing that's happening will be the reach-out from the engineering firm, VHB, with their representative for dealing with right-of-ways, which Dave said has been anytime now for a while now, so hopefully the landowners hear from them soon. A sand shed has been delayed because of various permitting and getting driveways. We now have that previous cut cleared, and the driveway permit is in progress. So hopefully, we'll have good news on that shortly. For Town Hall, things have been ongoing. The... There are a few different projects that you'll see listed, such as the solar modem replacements that we'd mentioned before, to upgrade and get away from the 3G that didn't work anymore, to the newer technologies. Also, the fobs should be coming soon, we're waiting for another quote on that, for them to get back to Dana. I put up the AV system, as you'll see, we are using the new projector. There are some kind of gotchas with the way that the system is working. But the reason that it's all for the AV system instead of just the projector, in, one of the reasons you don't see mics in front of us right now, is our PA slash amplifier system appears to have bit it. So we're gonna see what we can do about that in the near future as well. Obviously, we won't need to replace a lot of things, but the unit doesn't turn on, and I've tried many troubleshooting steps on it so far. Property sales, we finished some of the property sales in the past couple meetings. There are apparently a couple more that we'll be looking at in the near future for mergers and possibly putting up for a butters, for example, in Pillsbury Lake. And we'll hear more about that from Dana when the time comes and they're ready. Deer Meadows Solar, still nothing has been changed there. Basically, they are still waiting for the rest of the interconnect study, so that they can finish up what they want to give us. And when they do, then we'll be able to continue moving forward. The digital records have been in progress. It sounds like that is mostly done now for the Land Use Department, which is Ross, our Assistant Town Administrator. If you have questions about that, please see him. But it sounds like things are moving along fairly well there. And then lastly, our policy review, we finished that a little while ago. And Dana has now finished putting the book together for the most part. So within the next week, you should see all of that updated and accurate on the website to reflect everything that is current. With that said, I'm gonna go ahead and get rid of all of this, 'cause that was all that was for at this moment. And move on to our first appointment, which is Pillsbury Lake. So come on down.
That'll probably be pretty quick. So we just had our playground installed over there. We still have a lot of work to do before it's actually has kids on it and things like that, especially with the rain. I don't even know if it's, if it's cement completely. It was underwater when the installation company came, 'cause we had it dug out the, you know, 12 inches or so that they require, and then it filled with rain literally the day before they came. So they did graciously put some drainage in there for us to try to help, and it does look like it is helping. And then we'll put some, we've gotta talk about it, but probably some sand and then the playground chips on it to be compliant with the insurance company. So lots of stuff still has to be done over there before we can have kids on it. So one of the things that had come up a lot was either the speed limit signs or playground signs or something on the road. I think, you know, as the chief knows, I think we've had quite a few tickets over there from the, you know, mostly from, I think, the neuro clinic. But either way, now that we have that installed, then more kids will definitely be out probably using it, hopefully this summer. The concern is, you know, we don't even have it closed off yet. We hopefully will have a fence going across, so kids won't just, like especially little kids, will be running across the road or something. So that's in, that's in Plan Two to do. But until then and things like that, we were just looking to see if some more signs or more, I don't even think that when you turn onto that road, I don't even think there's a speed limit sign turning onto Franklin Pierce from Conker Drive. So that's kind of what we were just looking for, is either some signs or something like that, just to show that there's at least playground, people really do need to slow down right there, especially now that we have that installed.
So putting up something like a playground sign, you know, Kids at Play sign, whatever, that should be pretty easy for us to get ordered from someplace and put up. What is the speed limit at that location?
Thirty.
Twenty-five.
I think it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
I believe it's twenty-five.
I thought they were all thirty.
No, I think at the entrance, there is some, the only one actually I can remember even seeing is actually coming the opposite direction on New Hampshire Drive towards Franklin Pierce. There's one that's twenty-five right there, it's getting a little old. But there's, I don't think that there's many actual signage over there for the speed limits. There might be one right on Conker Drive as you turn in, I believe. But it might just need just a, just like a couple more, especially near where the playground is. It's a little more open, people might see it better right there.
So are you looking just for more signage of the existing, what we believe is a twenty-five mile-per-hour limit? Or are you looking to actually change the limit, which is, I think, what we had been under the impression?
Right, I, I mean, I, just looking at it, I don't know that changing the limit. I mean, I know even here, out here with the school zone, it's thirty. You know, other playgrounds in the state, I kind of looked and it's generally twenty-five-ish, you know? So I don't know that, you know, changing the speed, I mean, I guess I would leave that to the chief and his expertise of what he thinks of that area right there, and what his patrols see or whatever. But even, even just signage would be okay with us. I, I just, you know, we just thought we would bring it up to see if, if there's something we probably should do just to make it a little more safer over there. I mean, we even talked about, you know, asking for a speed bump or something to be put in, just because of the, there's a lot of traffic, I mean, I worked over there, you know, almost a whole week, and the traffic over there is a lot.
There's a lot of traffic there.
There's a lot.
I mean, if you, if you even consider a speed bump at Happy at Temple, you don't want it there in the wintertime.
Right, that's true, yes.
But you should paint the sidewalk, a crosswalk there, because if the kids go from one side to the other playground across the street,
Yeah.
put a crosswalk there, they have to stop for anybody on the crosswalk.
Okay.
Nice bright white one or something, or even colored.
Sure, yeah.
Would be a good thing.
Yeah. And how do, how do we get to do that, like, do we just, like?
Just paint it.
Just paint it?
Talk to these two towns, they can fit right up.
Make it a project, and they can paint it all kinds of different colors.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So my two concerns is the pump site.
Yes, and I wanted to talk to you about, I have a few things to talk to you about separate.
And my other big concern is, and I've seen it happen, it happened not too long ago when the car didn't stop at the stop sign at the end of Long Street, went across Battle Street, went airborne up over the berm, it landed down on the backside of Potash, and it was quite a cadu. What are you putting up for Jersey barriers and stuff, so that doesn't happen down there? Because you have your playground right dead in line off in Manchester Drive, coming right straight, it's gonna wipe everything out and an older person or a younger, something happens or something, and it's, I've seen it. Have you gave that any thought?
Yeah, so the, the plan was to finish something in the front, especially so kids don't run out. And the other thing that I had brought up was the same thing. If, you know, elderly person, somebody parks there, accidentally drives forward and goes into the playground, you know, that certainly has happened, so we, that's definitely what we're looking at, whether we do a fence, placing rocks, you know, I'm not sure, we haven't quite gotten to that point yet. I think the plan so far was possibly just to continue the fence. But the problem with that was, again, the pump site, I didn't know, you know, should we leave an opening behind the pump site? So that's stuff that I, we needed to chat with you about and, and see what you thought about, you know, that. And then also parking, because, you know, you can't park too close to it, and we wanna make sure we either cordon that off somehow or do something that would be okay with you, so that people aren't, you know, parking where they shouldn't park and, and things like that. So that's definitely, I think the plan, 'cause we have some already, would be to continue some of that fence and leave an opening maybe on that side where the pump site is, you know?
The fence is gonna maybe keep the kids in, but it's not gonna keep the motor vehicles in the, out, it's not gonna.
Right, I, I mean, I think it would slow them down quite a bit, no?
Big rocks would be good.
Yeah.
Big rocks or some sort of a guardrail-style fence.
Right, or even rocks right behind where we put the fence or something, just to, more to like, I think that another thing was keeping the kids kind of quarantined so they don't run across, and then also something, so we could put some, some large boulders or something behind.
Large boulders would stop a car first, and then you can put a less expensive fence up, just to keep the kids from running across.
Right, yeah, yeah, I think we already have some of that black fencing already, so I think we were just gonna continue with that, but, but yeah, okay, so we'll, we'll definitely do that.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm not trying to.
Oh, no, we definitely talked about it.
I, I was, it blew my socks off that day when that car, I mean, it just.
Yep, yep, and my thought was exactly that, was that somebody, somebody's grandma or something's gonna park and then accidentally put it in drive, and there goes the, you know, twenty-five thousand dollar playground we just put in. You know, never mind that, but some kids are on it, and there we go, you know, so.
What is it, what's it, what's it take to have like a speed bump though?
It, it's a lot of liability.
A speed bump is?
A speed bump is a lot of liability.
On who, on the town?
Well, whoever puts it up, because think about if somebody's car gets damaged.
Damaged or whatever.
Well, that means they're going too fast.
Foggy night, yeah, but it's still.
Okay, I just wasn't sure, because we all know that it does remind you, because who wants to hit it? You know, we all get going along and doing our thing, we don't take people purposely, but then you hit a speed bump, you're like, oh, oh crap.
Do any of our neighboring towns have the like temporary, like hard rubber-style speed bumps?
Not across the road that I know of.
No, the only speed bumps that I've seen is going in the back way. I mean, the new entrance at Clark and Hospital, I don't know, they might not have them up. I was up there the other day and did notice them, but they might take them down for the winter like you, they usually do.
I was just thinking, if any of them had the like temporary rubber ones that sometimes get put in like parking lots, for example.
Yeah, they usually put those in and they pin them to the ground.
But if, if we had something like that for.
But that's what I was thinking.
Like, we put it up with the new, the new signs for the playground, the speed limit sign, if we had a town that we could borrow them from for like a week or something, that would be a great time to do it, and then give them back, 'cause I don't, I don't think the majority of people would want a permanent speed bump there. And we certainly wouldn't wanna be dealing with it in winter for plowing.
Right.
Not for plowing, you really don't wanna drill down into the asphalt.
That on asphalt, junk.
That one's bad enough as it is, it doesn't need any worse.
It's bad over there anyway, it's pretty.
I, I guess we're looking at two, two things here. One is for kind of us as the board, 'cause we're the finance side of the town, which is extra signage and stuff. And I personally don't have any problems with extra signage, whether it's speed limit, kids at play, playground, or all of the above.
Yeah, no problem here.
So.
Great, as long as you have a budget to take the stuff out of and to put it up.
So we can, we can make sure that that can happen and work with Emmett to make sure that the correct signage goes up for that, and the chief to make sure that you've got accurate speed limit signs and.
You know, I think what we have to do is go back through the things, because just because a speed limit sign says it's twenty-five.
Right.
If it wasn't adopted and it's not at the town clerk at twenty-five, and it goes to court, and somebody's seen all this and knows it's never been, 'cause a lot of people back in the day just put a.
Put one.
Put one up, but unless it has the backing behind it, it's no good.
Okay.
Right?
And if you, if you adopt it, we can, some of my town summons is, then it goes to the town.
Yeah.
Am I right on that, Chief?
You're absolutely right.
Just so we all, when you, when the police stop and a rap, no, or give them a ticket, then that's.
So I, and I know that in the past, there had been at least a few different people saying, hey, I wish our road was, you know, or the roads here in specific spots of Pillsbury Lake were a lower speed limit. Like, well.
Yeah.
Talk to Pillsbury Lake Village District, you know, commissioners, and have them bring a proposal to us of what they want for the speeds, and then we can look at whatever the proper way is to adopt that.
Right, yeah, and I don't know, I mean, I don't know.
And if they all, if, if the belief is that, you know, yeah, this is a short road, that's just a, basically a turning spot, and it's right next to the playground, so it shouldn't be more than twenty. Like, if that is the belief of the board as a whole, just write it up, have it, have it brought to us, and, and we can go through the process to do it the, the correct way.
Right, yeah, I didn't, I just, I think we were just trying to, you know, leave it up to you guys, maybe even the chief, with his experience of, of what it really should be right there, especially with, you know, what you, your patrols are seeing or whatever, we have a lot of walkers out there, things like that. So, I mean, if, 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 if you think it should be twenty, I mean, we can certainly write something like that up, but.
What we see more is they're going fast just before they get to there, and then they slow down, 'cause they all seem to be turning to the right.
Turning.
And then they're all going straight down the road.
Right.
It's hard to get a lot of speed in that little section from Manchester Drive, just past there, 'cause you're right there at the intersection. And they're usually slowing down to take a right.
Yeah.
And the residents, you don't see the residents speed much there at all.
Yeah, no.
Maybe down on New Hampshire Drive where they get the long straight stretch, but.
Right.
I don't, I don't think we've ever pinched anybody down there for speed, 'cause they're all residents.
Right, yeah, most of, most of us know that there's people walking or kids or.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that walk.
All the time, every day I see people out there walking their dogs and stuff.
Exactly.
Chickens.
Yes.
How about, how about a Kids at Play or whatever sign?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, that's what, I think we're fine with that, we can see how it goes. And if, and if it's, you know, if people are still saying that, if people are driving fast there, you know, we can come back again, you know, after we just get at least one sign out there.
What have them, sorry, what do them, you see them around playgrounds and stuff? They, I don't know if they run on solar, but.
Your solar blinking lights?
No, no, it's, it flashes your speed.
Oh, the radar.
Oh, like on the telephone.
And when you do win the right speed, they say, thank you, why are they so expensive?
It's a radar unit inside, that's the, that's the cost of mine.
Okay, so they are, it gets expensive. No, I was just curious, because a lot of times, people, you, you just be going along and you don't, and then all of a sudden, then you go, oop, you know, and catch, you know?
Uh, yeah.
'Cause we're all in the fast lane.
Even just a blinking yellow light with a solar panel, so that just blinks. They set it for a timer.
Yeah.
That's fairly easy to, to do.
That'd be a good idea.
That's what we're trying to get them to do for, down in front of the school, and they're supposed to be replacing them with solar.
Yeah, they were, the last time that they talked about doing that, they were looking at the solar, but we're like, well, it's already hardwired, that's fine, we'll just replace it with an LED and call it good, 'cause it's a lot cheaper, and then you don't have to think about the maintenance either.
And the crosswalk thing, I think, is a smart idea, because it keeps them.
Centers at the side of somewhere.
See the crosswalk, and yeah.
Do we need to.
And a crosswalk sign.
Do we need to adopt anything or have a plan put forward and go through, for example, Planning Board or anything like that for the crosswalk stuff? 'Cause normally, that would be dealt with in like a subdivision sort of planning aspect.
The selectmen can adopt anything they want, I don't see where the Planning Board has anything to do with it.
I just wanna make sure that we don't just paint one and then someone blows through it and causes a problem, and it wasn't official, et cetera, so.
Right.
So can you make sure that we're able to do that however the most appropriate manner is?
I can, sure.
Right, because then if that was up yield with a sign, yield to pedestrians.
Right.
I mean, that would be, you should be paying attention.
Yeah, yield to, yield to pedestrians, kids at play, sort of thing. So we'll have Dana look into the most appropriate way to do that.
Okay.
But, yeah.
So is that relative to adding signs as well as the crosswalks, is that what you're saying?
I don't think you need to get permission, but just, I don't think so.
Where do they, I just wonder, how much land do you have on that playground? Is there more land in the back too?
I can tell you, I have it right here.
Oh, thank you.
The, the playground part where the actual swing set is, the back of that is actually the lake.
Oh, it's right there?
It's right there, so we have, that's why you have the fencing.
Point six-one acres.
It's how, pump, sorry?
It's point.
Point six.
Six-one, just over half an acre, yeah, just over a half an acre.
And then we have across the street where the basketball court is, and that big area. Which has a huge.
And that's two point five-nine acres.
Yeah.
So that's two and a half acres there.
And, and is, are the parks, like the, the basketball and the, the baseball, et cetera, and the playground all still marked as Pillsbury Lake residents only?
Just, just the rec area is, at the, at the moment. Or just the basketball court area and the baseball field is at the moment. We do have a sign for the playground. Whether it gets put up or not, we haven't really talked about that part of it yet, of, of what we wanna do for that. So the, the concern was that, you know, the neuro center was, was using it, kids were out there and, and kids were getting yelled at and things like that. And I know this, 'cause one of the kids was mine, and I was right there. So we put up the sign, 'cause, you know, they can be yelling at our kids that live here or are trying to play here.
Oh, right, correct.
You know, so we put the sign up, but we've had other people, like, we had a group that doesn't live here. They came and had a big softball thing. We didn't, that's fine, we didn't care, I mean, we're just gonna let people anyways, it's just, you know, the kids, my child won't go there now, because he's scared of the neuro people, so if I'm not there, or he doesn't have at least a friend there, he's getting a little older now, but if he doesn't have a friend there, he won't go over there by himself. So they're just scared, some of the kids, especially my son's age, they, they've gotten scared now. So they won't walk either without a friend or without a parent or.
And that's too bad.
It is too bad, and so unfortunately, we did put up the sign, but, you know, we've, we've had a little leeway with that. You know, especially if it's, you know, people come and have a softball tournament or something, or, you know, if my son's baseball team goes out there and has a practice, which they can't do, because there's a water issue over there. It's good for, you know, summer and fall, but springtime, it's not good over there, it's all wet. But yeah, so that's the only really reason why it's up. And then for the playground, there does have to be a sign. Primex would like us to have a sign, like with hours and things like that on it, which I think we already had printed, already done, and we just haven't, I mean, it's, nothing's been put up yet.
When you're parking, do you park facing the playground, or do you just park on the roads?
Yeah, it's park facing it.
Into, into, that's what I thought.
Yeah, 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 and we had talked about possibly, I was gonna come to the Planning Board last Thursday, and I didn't make it to talk to them about possible more parking. But I also need to talk to Emmett, because I don't know that where we were thinking is gonna work, because it's generally wet. And it's right where the, the shed, the garage is, the entrance. We were just gonna go along that and just add like five or six parking spots. But it's a little indented there, and it's always wet, so I just, we weren't sure whether we wanted to try to do that or not, just to add some more face-in parking, so people aren't on the road, yeah. Yeah, 'cause there's not a whole lot of parking.
It's, it's safer for kids if they're not on the road, so people can see the kids too.
Right, yeah, yeah, so.
Right, and that was my goal for, it was gonna be this week, but after the rain, I have to let things dry out for the following week. Around that whole corner from Franklin Pierce, from over the years, the, the sand and the ditches are higher than the road in through there on Bull Sides, and then where it goes around the corner to Manchester, the water's not emptying that out, it's just sitting there. So that won't be this week, but the following week, we're gonna come down there and get that, that cleaned up. So if we look at that before I get down there with the machine, maybe there's something we can do to help you.
Okay, yeah.
When we're coming through. And then, not to throw a log in the fire, but when you pull, uh, okay, no, that's wet, too wet. I was gonna say the town owned a piece of land up across from that White House, right beside of the playground, right across the street, but it's where that culvert.
Behind the garage, kind of, you mean?
No, no, on the other side of Manchester Drive.
Okay.
Headed to Franklin Pierce. There's a little piece there, but I, it's looking right here like it's wet.
It's, yeah, that's.
It's only a quarter of an acre, but you might be able to get it. So let's see what we can do down, you've got a good idea down there, and then, there's no, yeah. Then they just have to walk down the.
Right.
To the basketball hoop and go across.
Right.
So, sure.
That'd be a good idea.
Yeah, just to add a few more, well, I need to come to the, I think we have to ask, do we have to ask for driveway permit for that too? Or is that just?
Oh, it's showing here that it's owned by the Town of Webster, the land. So I guess that's, what's the.
Oh, you mean the extra spot that you're thinking?
No, everything there is on here under the Town of Webster. Even the big piece, the forest, the bonne hill that was logged off a few years back, that shows the Town of Webster owns it.
Well, I don't see any problem, I mean, technically.
No, I, I don't, I don't have a problem, I mean, with that is, but I can't, I can't.
So when you say you're, you're wondering about the driveway for your, do you mean?
I did know, I needed something to put more, add more parking.
To add more parking.
Yeah, so I know. Yeah. So I know Russ had suggested that I come to the planning board meeting and I wasn't able to get here last week, so.
That probably makes the most sense, cause they normally do all the driveway stuff.
Yeah, and I can like kind of, I can bring a picture and just make sure everybody's on the same page of what we're asking.
Well, usually at the planning board, they, they bring in a design to Russell.
Okay.
And Paul King and I.
Yeah.
Do that. But it's, the planning board, I guess it's, would be the right thing to do to ask them to add to the parking. And then if they're all good with that, then Paul and I, that would make the most sense. And then everybody's on the same page.
Then we follow the normal process, even though it's town owned, so we probably don't technically have to, but we try to.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I will come to one of those and get that done.
That's probably the, the best way to do that.
Can I ask about two more things while I'm here? One thing was we mentioned the chickens. So while I was out there working for a week, um, I had residents who walk in their dogs, ask and, they constantly ask about the chickens and whether or not people are, are actually supposed to have chickens. Um, so, um, I think the biggest complaint is more that they're free range, cause they're all over the road and everything.
They're everywhere.
Um, they are everywhere. And then now they have a rooster. Um, so that's the newest thing. Um, and we just got told that another, um, homeowner has gotten six, seventeen chickens. Um, they're still babies, but, um.
The rooster's gone.
Oh, is it gone? Okay. I only heard that like a couple of weeks ago.
The rooster was squawking early in the morning.
Rooster, okay.
Yeah, they do that. I have two under my bedroom window. I would like to get rid of them.
Yeah, that's what we have.
I don't know how you guys can do it, but you know, I don't know. We're a little more residential than some of the lots in Webster, so.
Well, you look it up. We are, the, the town of Webster in Pillsbury Lake is a part of the town of Webster.
I get it.
Yeah, that's right.
And it is owned agricultural.
Right, I get it.
So, so the, the last time that I looked into this, because I couldn't believe that it was that different and weird.
Right.
There was still a Pillsbury Lake management.
Yeah.
At the time. And chickens were not allowed in Pillsbury Lake, but raising ducks and geese were. Uh, which of course would be a whole lot louder.
A lot meaner.
Meaner.
Ah, I thought it just said poultry, like I thought it just said.
That, that's the way that, well, so it came up, I wanna say three or four years ago, because somebody tried to do chickens, was told no, and switched over to do one of the others.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, that was the way that it was then, and it was also Pillsbury Lake management that was handling it because it was a Pillsbury Lake thing. Um, I believe Russ was looking into something regarding this to see who did what, like when and where now. Because there isn't really the PLM structure anymore.
Right, so. And we had asked our attorney about that and it was basically like, it, cause it's in everybody's deed, but the village district doesn't have control over that. But now the town of Webster does. Because that's now their responsibility, because since there's no HOA. But because that, those, uh, restrictions or whatever are in everyone's deed of, of, you know, what happens to those. And our attorney told us it's now just falls on the town of Webster to either enforce or not enforce. Um, so yeah, that's what we didn't know. I did talk to Russ about it and he just basically said to file a complaint and then they'll do whatever. I don't know what they'll, they would do, but.
So there's a complaint form for it?
Right.
And then when the complaint form comes in, uh, Russ and or anybody else that is appropriate will look into the legal regulations and how it was adopted and when and all that to make sure it's kosher and enforceable.
Right.
If it is, they'll send out, uh, our code inspection officer to go make sure that yes, this really is happening. Here's all the documentation for it. And then it would go through code compliance, uh, just like anything else, whether it's a setback issue or something else.
Right.
Um, so that, that's the process that would take.
Okay.
So if you, you or whoever is the neighbor that's agreed, et cetera, files a complaint directly, uh, with Russ. And I think we've got that form on our website. If they wanna just fill it out and bring it in or drop it off.
Okay.
Uh, or they can come in and fill it out with Russ in person, et cetera. Uh, but that's the easiest way to move forward with it. Cause then there's a, a trail and a process that's pretty easy to follow.
Okay, yeah. And that's, I mean, that's what I wanna just make sure I tell people the right way to go about if you have a complaint. Because they can complain to me all they want, but I'm, I'm ready for anything about it, so.
Yeah, that's, that's where it goes.
I don't live next to the people with the chickens or the roosters, so, I mean, I am a little worried about the seventeen chickens coming in, but, um.
The what?
We'll see how that goes. The seventeen chickens that someone just got.
That's kind of a lot, but.
It is a lot. Yeah, I mean, hopefully they won't be free range like the other ones are. The other ones aren't, they don't have too many. Um, but the seventeen, that's interesting, but.
Well, I know, just for looks.
Huh?
They eat ticks?
That's great.
It was from, from a personal perspective, I had chickens and I could never let them free range, cause I wouldn't have one chicken left. Well, that's great. And I just had a weasel kill twenty of my twenty-three chickens and they were in a fence. And they were, and then I left them, locked them in a chicken coop.
Yeah.
The weasel got in somehow.
Somehow. And I'm surprised they haven't, I don't know if they've lost any chickens or not. I mean, letting theirs go out. I think they get them back in at night, cause I don't, I never really see them at night when I have to go down for the pumps. But during the daytime, if I'm down there, I see them.
Chickens are smart enough to go in at night.
Go in at night, yeah. My gosh.
Yeah, but if you don't shut the door behind them, then it's all open. I mean, I have no luck with chickens because of the fox and stuff.
But I, you know, I wouldn't mind if they got killed, in, in a way, if something ate them, but weasels just kill them and leave them.
Suck the blood out of them and go on.
And it's disgusting. And I, and I had mine locked in the chicken coop. After I found that out, they got in somehow. God, it's an old barn, so who knows how they got in.
So we've, we've covered the chickens, then you said there was another item?
One more. Um, we need a permit to operate the clubhouse. Can we get one?
How are you making out with all your stuff?
It's all done.
It's all good?
All nice. You should, wait till you see how much we fixed and spent money on.
Okay.
It was a lot of money. Uh, but yeah, the bathrooms are gorgeous. Um, he ripped everything out down.
So we can inspect it top and bottom now?
Should be good.
All good?
Should be good, yeah. Um, the only thing that hasn't been done was the outside, um, um, deck. Um, that's, uh, towards the Deer Meadow part. Um, that's just been closed off for now. We are gonna work on that this summer. Michael Dowd's gonna, we're gonna work on it and try to do that ourselves because.
So it's just blocked off?
It's blocked off, yeah. And the insurance company was okay with that, um, cause nobody can go out there. Um, so that's the only thing we had left on that. We have a few other small things, but nothing that wasn't part of the insurance or anything, just some things that we wanna just, you know, spruce up and fix and stuff. Um, but for the most part, everything on the, the, um, insurance thing has been done except for the deck. So that's it. But the bathrooms were the biggest thing because it was all rotted and there were beams rotted. You had to replace all those. Everything had to come out.
Yeah, no, I saw them guys. They were down there. It looked like they were going right to town.
Yeah, they had to take everything out. I have pictures of it.
Good, awesome. No, we'll get together with you then and get that.
Yeah, cause we have people that are, you know, constantly, can we rent it and can we this that? So we just need to get, get that done and get the permit to operate and keep going. So we can start renting it and maybe, maybe actually make a little money or recoup some that we just spent on the, the bathrooms. They're all ADA compliant now too. Um, so we're, we're making sure we're getting all that done. Um, so that's what the playground will be. It'll be all ADA compliant. Um, making sure we do everything right this time, so.
Sounds good.
That's awesome though. Good job.
Um, so before you go, I see that in the packet, we have a DES thing that is actually for Pillsbury Lake.
Yes.
Can you fill us in on that and her as well, if she doesn't?
Well, she should have gotten one already.
I know. What did I get? I don't know.
Sounds like me.
I just talked to DS today on the phone, so what?
Um, this was a letter that the board got a copy of and it was addressed to Pillsbury Lake District Commissioners, three ninety-six Deer Meadow Road. So maybe you haven't seen it. It's dated April twelfth. I got it last, a week ago, Friday. And it's talking about the inspection of the dam and the condition, you know, they, they.
Yeah. We have not gotten that.
Um, I didn't see anything in there that you should be terribly concerned about, but, um.
I've not seen that. I don't know if we even have.
If you want, I can send you a copy.
If you could email me one, that would be great. I don't know that I have one.
Yeah.
So it may go to, um.
Three ninety-six Deer Meadow?
Yeah, I, well, if they mailed it or if they emailed it, it would have probably gone to Gary French or Lena Stepp. They're, they're the ones that are kind of, uh, have taken control of the dam, but Lynn is no longer going to do it, so we're, we're working.
I think this came in the regular mail.
Oh, okay. So it could have come and Jamie may have it. Our meeting is tomorrow.
Oh, I can, I can scan it and send it to you.
Yeah.
I mean, it, worst case scenario, you have it twice.
Yeah, yeah. Great, okay. So hopefully it's okay. I think the only thing we were worried about is the sides weren't cleared, um, but we've already, we took care of that around.
I mean, they talk, naturally, that not everything is gonna be absolutely perfect.
Right, yeah. No, we, we get letters from DES all the time. It's very lovely.
You know, some minor discrepancies, um, things that need to be, deficiencies is what they call them.
Okay, yeah.
So.
Good, well, I'll look at that and make sure we're, stay on top of that.
Just making sure that since we had a copy sitting here, we.
I was saying the same thing, yeah. At least she knows.
That doesn't really look like it's for us.
And I don't know, do you guys get like letters from them about our wells or anything like that? Cause we just got well eight permitted to.
No, I have not seen anything like that.
All right, I didn't know if you guys get that stuff too.
The wells in the water system would be specific only to the village district.
Okay.
So we shouldn't get that stuff in general.
Right.
Um, the things like the dam or roads, et cetera, when DES deals with those, since they're infrastructure that's the towns.
Yeah.
Um, but also Pillsbury Lakes and this weird mix. Um, then we usually get CC on it and it's to you guys.
Right.
All right.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. That moves us on to department heads.
And he ran away, so go ahead.
His phone rang. He knew what was going on.
I know.
So. We've been a little busy. Just a little busy. Um, but it's all good. All under control. Um. I got a hundred and five thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars left in my budget as of the twenty-seventh, so we're, we're good. We're running line. Budget's good for me. Um, we had busy motor vehicle month, seventy-eight stops with, uh, seven summonses and thousand twenty-three dollars in fines, so somebody's not happy. Um, typical calls, so we had sixty-six calls for service, uh, two arrests with seven summon, seven charges on. DWIs, for some reason, DWIs are starting to come back, which is unusual.
What was?
DWIs.
Oh, DWIs.
Just, and both during the daytime, which is really bizarre.
Wow.
One ten o'clock in the morning and one at like two in the clear afternoon.
At ten o'clock in the morning, maybe he just forgot to go to bed.
I think he was drunk the night before and just never sobered up and he was on his way. But the typical calls, I mean, it's, and you could almost cob and copy most of the calls. Um, department tips that we received, juvenile petitions, mental health issues. We've had a few of those this week. Um, pistol permits, residential burglar alarms with no break-ins, which is good. Uh, and we did catch a kid that was breaking into the cars. Um, we got him and he's a juvenile. And, uh, sex offender registries is always road hazards. We cleaned a lot of stuff out of the roads, cause we're busy. Um, pistol permits, uh, sex offenders, uh, suspicious vehicles, we had a few of those. Vacant house checks. We've had a lot of people going on vacations.
Oh, school, school vacation, yeah.
Um, drug activity, assist other agents, animal complaints, citizens assist, uh, fire and EMS, they were busy. Uh, and that's probably most of it. So it's been busy.
What about the big one that made the paper?
Which one? The bombs or the, uh?
Yeah, it's kinda scary.
Um, yeah, well, he's in jail right now. Um, right now, it looks like they're gonna have seven felony charges against him. Um, so he's looking at, and we're gonna charge him federally instead of state violations. He'd be better off with more time. And, uh, the ATF's all over it. They want something to do, so they're gonna ATF and, I was shocked that the ATF and FBI came right from Boston.
Wow.
They were here.
But that's scary. I mean, come on, you know, you don't want kids riding a bike or who, you know?
The only good thing is he wasn't setting them off near anybody or he, he wasn't targeting anybody. These were like on the edge of the road.
But pretty sick.
But hey, one guy got hurt because he saw it and went over to investigate it and it blew up when he got close to it. Uh, but he didn't get hurt bad. He got one little minor cut. He's okay. Out of the hospital.
But it could be, you know, kids, kids riding bikes or on this time of year and stuff, see something like that, oh, what's that?
If they picked it up and detonated, they wouldn't have a hand.
But at least it's mischief instead of.
Yeah, and not targeting somebody's house or putting it in somebody's house.
It's not like mischief I'd like to see around.
Oh, no, 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 no. But he's caught, he's in jail, so I'm happy about that.
So he's been in town, yeah, he's lived in town a long time?
Yes, been here for quite a while.
Three, three, four years.
Oh, yeah, anyway.
Yeah, no.
That's not a long time.
Well, I thought he was, he was, I thought he was living here before they built the new house.
I don't believe so, but, um, I could be wrong. Cause I think she bu, bought the house and then they got married and he moved in. But I could, I, I don't know. I don't, I know a lot, but I don't know it all.
Either way, either way, you need that type of people living in Webster. Sounds a little prejudiced, but.
We don't want them anywhere.
Well, yeah, that's true.
But it all worked out good for us. Nobody hurt and, yeah, behind bars. And that's what we want.
So regarding the vehicle break-ins, uh, obviously it came out that it was a minor.
Yes.
My question related to all of it is, were things missing from vehicles that have been documented or was it just breaking?
They were unlocked, cause he just, he was looking to unlock cars and taking change. If they left a wallet or something in there. Um, biggest thing was he got a credit card. Somebody left their wallet and he got a credit card, tried to buy, tried to buy marijuana online. That didn't work.
Could've come down to the cop shop. You could've gave him some. He's got plenty, that's for sure.
So where was this happening? Just around?
Um, Call Road, Tyler Road, um, yeah, Call Road. There was three or four of them on Call Road.
There was also, uh.
That left the cars unlocked.
There were also some that were on, uh, Close Pin.
Yep, Close Pin Bridge, um.
Didn't even know.
Tyler Road.
All, all the reports were, you know, masked and got on a bicycle and left.
Right, then, then, then there was them other two kids that they caught that broke the windshields.
Same, same kids.
Did they need a job?
Same kids.
Yeah, they broke a bunch of windshield, all the Chucky stuff out.
Chucky Rose is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's broke all windows.
And then, um, broke Close Pin, um, Corn Hill.
Yep.
Corn Hill, they broke a bunch of stuff.
Um, stole a bicycle, caught him on the bicycle after he repainted it, so that's good.
Jeez. Minors.
Minors.
Under eighteen.
Yep.
Old enough to work yet?
Hmm, not really.
I think they just need a job. I think they're bored.
They need something, that's for sure.
All right.
Can't they come out here and snowball and rake? Yeah, right. Don't we need that ass? That's too much like work. That's too bad. Well, I'm glad you caught them anyways.
Absolutely. We got them.
Yeah, good job.
All right.
That's it for me.
I'm good.
You smell more snow. You're good. You're playing in the water now.
Yeah, yeah.
Little windstorm here and there.
Let's start with the, uh, what I think is probably the easier one with fire.
Okay, um, we're at sixty-nine calls, uh, medical calls, a lot of were medical calls. And then Friday afternoon, we went and helped Jordan, um, stop traffic to wait for, um, the bomb squad and the ATF and all that to come. Um, that was interesting.
I bet it was.
Nice guys, um. And, yeah, no, our gear racks that we ordered, that we encumbered the money for, um, arrived last week. So I have the bill. I haven't opened it yet, but I will get that to you so we can get that behind us.
Okay.
Um, the equipment's all in good shape. Um.
It's sixty-nine calls. Is that, is that now?
It's sixty-nine calls, is that, is that an average? How do you say it?
Yeah, we average two hundred calls a year.
Okay.
So you take, um, yeah, we're.
It just seemed like a little bit more than usual.
It's, it could be, but then it will average out, and you'll have two, and then you, you won't have anything for two weeks or a week, uh, and so you sit down to, dinner's getting on the table.
Yeah.
And that's when the calls come.
Yeah, so, um. Yeah, I went, Rob called from Maine, he was in Maine on Friday, and they had a non-permit fire burning on Dustin Road, so I went down and Jordan was down beside the road, so I stopped and said, hey, you coming with me? Yep, so he, cause I did, you don't know what you're.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, um, and so he went down and with me down there, the guy was great, and, um, he says, I've only been burning here for five years, and Jordan says, well, you had a pretty good run of it. So, um, nice guy, told him the rules and regulations and, um.
Was it like a brush fire or like in a fire pit kind of thing?
Well, it was in the oxbow of the river, and it probably wouldn't have gone anywhere, but they had some calls on it from, um, Deer Path and Kentucky.
Yep, that's where the calls came from.
Yeah, goes out, goes out across, and you can see across the river there, and they were just doing the right thing, you know, it's daytime, not supposed to be burning, and, um, so Jordan and I left there and then coming back by the safety building, and I looked in the mirror and the blue lights are flashing, and I pull over and he stopped and I wrote, don't you gotta follow me? So we went up to the, the bomb.
Hell.
Thing there, and then, uh, Ben and Cam and Jake and, um, came along, so we had plenty of help in case, you know, needed, had a couple of E M Ts there. So, while we were there and they found, they just shot that one off, and it wasn't as loud as I thought it was gonna be, so when they were finishing up their investigation from that, I think it was Jordan walking up the other side of the road and had found one that had already been exploded.
Oh, jeez.
You know, a, a while back, not, so, um, we get out of there about six thirty, I was late for an important date, but, um.
You still made it.
You got over it.
Yep.
I think he'd leave you as long as he needed.
So, just for the heck of it, when you're saying the ATF got involved in all that, that's, that's big time.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not getting off with a little smack and, you know, poor boy, don't do that again, or girl, whatever happened to me, um, so that's good, I think.
The state police, the bomb squad, they, they, um, they didn't use their robot, but they, that one guy, he suited up in that armor thing.
Oh, wow.
And it took two of them to put it up on, they show up on, up on his back, no, it's heavy, so it's something, no, it, it was, it was something to see. We've had the classes, we've been to the classes and, um, and watched the robot in different things, on tracks, go in and, and do that stuff, but I'd never seen, so it was, you know.
Well, I learned something.
Yeah.
Yeah, they bring a portable X-ray machine and X-ray it.
Oh, wow.
In fact, they got the X-rays, they sent them to me on my phone, um, it shows everything that's inside.
It's a long wire, it's a long yellow wire, it's on a roll, and they take it out and.
Crystal clear too, I mean, really clear.
Well, I'm just glad nobody got really hurt, that's.
Yeah.
And then you can't help it, I think.
Cause kids will be coming out and kicks and stuff coming up now.
I know there's probably no big, any answer, but why?
Well.
Yeah, why?
Anyway.
So, yeah, I did put a call into Chris Champagne the other day, he is a fire truck salesman, and he texted me back, can't talk right now, so it's, uh, I'm gonna give him another buzz because it's been a while, but I know he's a very busy man, but, um, see the status on that part, um. Yeah.
Sounds good.
So. So the roads, we started, well, we started grading for spring grading and then on Thursday, week before, and then it was gonna rain on Sunday, all that rain, so we didn't grade Friday because we didn't want them to pop back out, so they never did dry out, so we, we're gonna let it dry out a little bit more, and tomorrow it's supposed to rain all day, so, um.
You're pretty much shot for this weekend, yeah?
Yeah, we went over, we went over on Bashin Hollow, um, where the water kicked out and put a load of gravel up there this morning, and then down at the Concord Town Line, the water's still in the ditch, so you can't do anything cause you're just gonna make mud, but that shoulder's weak, and then the man up on Cluffins, uh, Little Hill, he just sent me a video, cause I, I did most of my roads this morning, but there was a couple that I didn't get to, so he said he had a wash out up there I gotta tend to, um.
But considering.
Oh, no.
I mean, I, I mean, I mean, my god, in some places you looked or it's, it's over the road or.
Yeah, no, considering.
I always say my, my little, my little road to nowhere, there goes more of it, it's over the culvert, yeah, so.
Considering.
I mean, everything looked pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good ditching that you do, you know, really, that's what it's all about.
It pays, it pays off, so, um, yeah, so.
Doing a good job.
Yeah, keep it, keep it up.
We're gonna do some more ditching, I put the excavator up on top of, um, Cluffin Sandbin and doing some stuff up on the flat part up there um, this week, and then the following week, I'm gonna do that down at Pillsbury Lake. I have been working with, um, with Hoptick and Forestry, Chuck Rose and Adam Mark on our pro, on our three wood cutting projects, um, at the safety building, getting a price on that, and at the Dustin Road property, where we're gonna get more when it sand out, and on the dirt part of Pleasant Street, cause I walked down through there and it was like either do it right and get it over with, or don't do it at all, so, um, gonna get a price on cutting that stuff, I talked to the landowners where we're gonna cut, and everybody's all good, so that's in the workings. So we can get started down there, and then when school gets out, then we can start our other summer project up on, up by Addis on Pleasant Street. Um, the bridge.
White Plains?
The White Plains, um, good guys, great guys to work with and around, um, Chad from Mitchy's there, checking the grades and going over everything, great guy. They've had a challenge, they did real good that first week, getting everything all ready. They left Friday night a week ago, came back Monday morning, and the water was right across, the pylons and the whole thing. So they worked their cans off, they got other pumps down there and, um, got that pumped out like Monday and Tuesday, so they were able to start doing stuff again on Wednesday, and then Wednesday night, they got into three rocks that are humongous, um, huge, so they brought a bigger excavator in, what, a three thirty-five Kitchi, and that young man, I mean, he knows, he's, he did a great job, he got one out of the three out, but the machine, I, I mean, they worked it, so then they had to call, they had a blasting company come in on Friday, they blasted the rocks, pulled them out, set the other cribbins that the box sat on, and then Saturday morning, they were there bright and early, and by noon time, they they had all them sections, seven or eight sections, seven sections, I guess, without the wing, six sections in the wing walls, all put in place and bolted together and started grouting it all in. So then this morning, I was there, there was no water, you could see the stones, but the water was in it, it just, it just started, it just started filling up, so they were shoveling against the tide, so I didn't get mad over there this afternoon, but the, the water hadn't crushed yet, um, so I don't think they got a whole lot done today. Um, and then with the rain tomorrow, but the box is in place and it's, it's just gonna wait for mother nature now.
No fighting mother nature.
No.
She usually wins. Why do we know she?
Well, I got in trouble back, way back, cause I told the, I think it was the three ladies, that I said, it's all a woman's fault, you know, and they said, what do you mean? I said, well, mother nature, I said, not by the time.
Yeah, fun.
Okay, but, um, yeah, they're doing.
And it's still closed right now, yeah.
Yeah, and it will be probably, and so, well, I, I'm, I'm guessing gonna, I, when I talked to Fire alarm today, um, just to make sure that they were still in sync with everything.
Right.
Um, and stuff, and, um, I, I told them, it would probably be closer to Thursday.
Well, hey, if they get it done this week, you know, that's not bad.
Yeah. But.
Cause, look at all the, look at all the, I mean, everything's, I mean.
If we hadn't had the rain.
Yeah.
Would have been, I mean, they, would have been driving over that Friday night, I know we would have, I mean, them guys, they're work, they, they don't fool around, they're a good, good bunch of guys.
They're working hard at it.
Yeah, and, and they haven't lost there, I'd already.
Gone home?
Well, I don't usually give up, but.
No, but you know what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so, um.
Yeah, water is a treat.
Remind me, it, the, the road is also getting raised, is that part of this, or is that later?
No, that's part of this, eighteen inches.
Okay, so that's all happening at the same time?
Yep, it's all happening, and the guardrails, which I did call, C W S, that number that you gave me again today, and it rang and rang and rang and rang, and then finally it did, the, I left my number, so, um, they're unavailable, and so we'll see if he calls back, um. And then we're gonna let that sit for most of the summer, Chad just thought it would be better, because it, things are gonna move and settle and everything to wait until, not wait way late this fall, but when they come to do some paving for me on another project or something, then, um, we'll pave that, but, um. And that's all.
It's all good.
Alright, pretty much, pretty much, I've got oodles of pictures, I sent Phil a video about every day. Cause he was, he was out of town, um, and I've got, I have, I'm gonna send him to Dana, and then he can, um, um, make a.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, really, that'd be.
It would be for town.
Pictures are worth a thousand words, so people can see that, that's good, excellent.
So, um. Yeah, I, no, I, actually, they just sent me a thing, they charged me more money for another iCloud, so, so I, I'll have to pass that ninety-nine cents on to somebody.
Awesome.
So, yeah.
Anything else?
I, I'm, I'm probably forgetting ten things, but, um, if I forget them, they'll be here next time.
Important, right?
They'll be here next time.
No, it sounds like you covered everything.
Yeah.
Cool.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you, Christ.
Thank you. So the.
Dinner on the table yet?
The.
Run!
Obviously, um, you've probably seen, but if not, uh, the state sent us a thing saying they're gonna come in and do resurfacing with Tyler Road and stuff like that.
Yeah, they, they did it today.
Yeah, they, they were.
They did it today.
They were working today, and I, I called Kevin King, he's a construction foreman for the state, and visited with him to, um, see if they were gonna just overlay it, or if they were gonna do some construction work, get some of the rocks and frost heaves and everything from, um.
Exactly, that's pretty good.
All wicked, um.
And he said?
And he said it would really work great, but we have no help, and we don't have this, and we don't have that, so it sounds like it's just gonna get paved, which was great. It will be great.
Until winter.
Well, until spring.
Right.
And. And I just said, okay, thank you. What are you gonna do?
As long as we're not paying for it, that's the good thing.
Well, we are.
Well, we are.
I thought the state was covering.
Well, I know. That's all it is.
A little bit of our taxes.
Yeah, well, everybody gets to share a little bit, but.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
So. That will give you another speedway down through there.
Oh, that, there's no doubt about that. I think we've already picked out our package spaces.
Cool.
So you'll let me know how fast I can manage to accelerate.
I was gonna say, can you let us know where they are?
Ask your husband, he sees me all the time.
Yeah, right, yeah.
He'll let us know where, where he is, when it flashes.
Um, yeah, that'd be good. Just call them in the morning, visit with them and talk to them, then you'll find out where they're at.
Well, and, and also the problem is, right, there's three of them out there that look all a little bit alike, and they all come from Call Road right now.
It's that bright red truck.
I know, I know, one time our lawyer said, you should just change that color, D O T would leave you alone. Probably not.
It's the red, it's the red. Dave, I wonder if, since the chiefs are here, if we could talk about, uh, the ARPA funds?
Yes.
Let's talk about the ARPA funds. Where we got.
Be a good time.
So, um, as I told you at the last meeting, I was just going to do the report on the ARPA fund.
Thank you.
And you did what you said?
For once.
Oh, my god, that's fantastic.
I like it.
It's not for once, I just say that.
Um, so, the total ARPA funds we got were two hundred four thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. We got it in two installments, one in twenty twenty-one and one in twenty twenty-two, and these were the projects that we did, and there are some projects that have not, um, been completed yet. And there is about ten thousand something dollars still available in the funds. Uh, the police had an overrun on the carpet because we didn't plan on having to have CompuTech come and move things.
Move things, sure.
And, and a few other incidentals, so, I mean, that, that's what happened there, um. And then last, at your last meeting, you voted to replace the sensors on the solar array.
Oh, the, that's the, uh.
That's the.
Modems, but, yes.
Oh.
The cellular, the cellular modems.
Okay. So you say we got ten thousand left? Ten thousand has not been accounted for yet, and assuming that, um, I think, and I'm not worried about it, but the sign at the safety building comes in what you expect, yet they're coming in now.
E, that's a set price.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a set price.
Uh, the, talking with you slightly earlier, the records retention stuff with the scanning, if we have, uh, if we have money left, we could use that for further scanning, uh, in the next departments, um, so we don't have to eat that or take up tons of time doing manual scanning.
Okay.
Um, if it's appropriate for specific.
Well, and I've, I've kind of, I've asked Russ to help me keep an eye on where that's going, cause I think it's, uh, the, the estimate is great, but then when it actually comes, job's done, it's, it's never the same. The seal coat at the. The seal coat at the public safety building, um, last time I talked to Phil, he hadn't gotten anybody or.
Well, he's gotten a price from one guy, um, and the other two haven't even responded. I don't, I don't know if it's, they're busy or what, but.
It's hard to get people to respond.
There's gotta be other people out there that we can, we can get ahold of. Cause I wanna get, there's bound to be, somebody's gonna give a cheaper price.
And then Emmett, you have the trailer for the coat, and I next, I've got this straight up.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's still in the workings. I need to, um, one of these rainy days, I need to drive down there, do that.
Do you have it already ordered? Or just money set aside for?
Money set aside and they, they, um, when I was there pricing them out, they had some there. I have to, um, and just need to go down and, um, follow through with it.
Right. It's always easier said than done.
It is.
I feel your pain.
And it's not, it's, it's not that far, but it's just.
Get there.
And.
Yep.
It's not that far, but it's far enough.
Okay.
I'm still waiting for the, um, I got an estimate from ESP for the fobs for this building.
Oh, good.
Um, it came in at sixteen thousand dollars. So I called Jeff and I, and I had had him priced up here too. So I called Jeff and said, I don't have that, so we need to.
Shapen a pencil.
Yeah, we need to re-figure that. Uh, I'm still waiting for that and if I don't hear from him in a few days, I'll call him again.
I mean, I know there's a lot of time and want, I mean, it would, yeah.
It's the wiring for the electricity to get to the doors.
To make it all work, but it is some nice. You can go back through the thing and.
Oh, I think it would be a great improvement.
I was in there at one o'clock in the morning.
Especially downstairs. I mean, up here, even if you only put one fob in or even if you didn't do any upstairs, as long as it downstairs this time, that, that would be my main concern.
Well, I was attracted that, um, he told me that the fobs cost five dollars each, the actual fob. So I'm thinking if we rented the hall, I would have them make a deposit of five dollars.
Yeah.
To, you know, and if they didn't give me the fob back, cause then I could re-unprogram it.
I'd do a ten dollar fee, you know, yeah.
That's the same thing.
I'd do at least a ten dollar fee.
Well, and it turned out to be, I thought it was a great idea, but it turned out to be a moot point, cause we can't afford it. So I'll have to give them the old key.
Should be a twenty-five dollar fee, so it takes a little bit, not just for what it costs, but the time that it takes to program it.
Door replacements already.
More than that, that's how you do it.
But, yeah. I would be, I would be tempted because it's just the right way to do it, but. We'll, we'll see what it's like with not including these, but if it's, uh, if it's not a huge difference, I'd be.
More than it cost us at the firehouse to do them two, three doors.
Get it done the right way, so we don't have to think about trying to.
I'm trying to drop my head, I, I gotta go.
Is it German keys that we can't get or is it someplace else?
Oh, we've solved the German key problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I, and it was very nice of the town to provide a, a first-class trip to Germany so I could get the keys. No, I was, I was able to find. I was able to, I was able to find someone in Nashua that could make these keys.
Hmm.
And of all people that went over for me was Fred Regan, um, because the school wanted another key. So, and I had one to give him, so now I have keys.
Awesome.
And it was very nice of Fred to do that.
So, but, uh, yes. All right. Was there anything specific that you wanted to talk about on this?
No, I just wanted you to see what we have, what was spent and what is left.
Station, whatever. I have to say, I'm, I'm thrilled with the amount of interest we burned on the account.
Well, I've.
I don't know how we did that, but.
Well, I have to tell you, the treasurer, um, is in a new program, cause the treasurer's in charge, as you know, of the bank accounts and, um, has gone into a new program and is getting terrific interest on the bank, on the town money. Which, which is good because I'm always, you know, painting a crate over everything, but that's my job. But so that is, it is, for a while we were getting nothing.
Yeah.
It was just beautiful.
And interest rates are high now, so.
Yeah, so. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention to the board was on the overall budget. We have two categories in administrative that is, um, overdrawn, one being printing for the tax map and the town report. Um, we had, we didn't budget correctly for that because we had a two thousand dollar bill from, uh, the tax map people for maintenance of our, uh, GIS things. And then we also had another two thousand bill to update the tax maps. So that kind of threw us for a loop. And down in planning, there's a slight overdraft, um, their legal fees, they were not expecting a case that they had to deal with. And, uh, but other than that, the bottom line, um, oh, and we didn't, the property liability went higher than we thought, so. Other than that, it was great. I always know that the police chief will give me some cash if I.
We can share.
I can't help myself, yeah.
All right.
So I just wanted you to be aware of that.
How are we looking as far as being able to continue with the payments, for example, with the school's higher payments and not having gotten taxes yet?
Well, I think the plan is going to be what we may have to do. First of all, we've had a, we've had a very strange year because we haven't had a town clerk, so that income, we haven't had as much income as we normally get from that department. But now that Mary's back in, back in.
Well, that's interesting, right, yeah.
We'll have more revenue from that, so, um, that will help us out a lot. We definitely can do one school payment, which is the, um, May school.
Am I right on this? Yeah, it's going in May.
Yeah, um, the May school payment. The June school payment, I may have to ask the school if they would wait. And I think I can do it that way, but, um, it, the, the balance is getting down. When we start getting tax money, it will be, it will be good. And I've asked departments not to spend if they can help it, anything. I'm gonna have to probably hit the trustees right away for this bridge bill, cause I don't wanna take that out of the general fund or I can't afford to float it.
Yep.
Yeah. For the town payment, when I say.
Well, may, as much as we've been trying to do quarterly, maybe we just, maybe we do do the float, but instead of going quarterly, we do monthly until we get taxes again.
Yeah, you know, we could, I mean, we done.
Cause that way it's easy and it's more of it coming back.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I just know the hundred thirty-five thousand we're expecting to pay out. Would certainly.
Right.
Not help.
All right.
But I don't think you'll have, I, I'm, I'm hopeful that you're not gonna have to do anything as far as any borrowing.
Sounds good. All right, so that moves us into old business. Which I don't have any specific listed for. Perfect. All right.
New.
We've never done business before. It's all new business.
We only do new stuff.
Scheduling scenic road maintenance.
Now, that is, Russ wants to, uh, wanted to just talk with you about scheduling a public hearing for some scenic road maintenance. Is that something you're doing, Emmett?
Yeah, I talked to Russ about that and I think he was gonna set it up maybe for our next select board meeting and he said that it needed to have two planning board members. And you, he knew you'd be here and then to try to get a, a hold of another.
So I was gonna suggest the next meeting.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me, May fifteen.
Um, what I'm asking for is nothing that we haven't talked about before, them four or five rocks that are on the beginning of Bashin Hollow going around there, um.
We've had a number of past, yeah.
Steve's talked to me about that and, um, some other people at Pillsbury Lake, and I know everybody uses that for a shortcut. But, and then up in front of Cliff Brokers, um, there's three or four ash. I mean, I can only cut a tree breast high the size of a coffee can on a scenic road, but, they're dead and we're up there, well, quite often, two, three times a week, throwing, have broken stuff out of the road and, and it, it's a hazard. I mean, they were dead all last summer and it, once a tree's dead, it, it's whatever, but I, I'd like to cut them or be able to cut them, so, um, that was my request.
Does the board have any problems scheduling that for our next meeting?
Nope, I don't.
All right, so just make sure that Russ gets, uh, that squared away for us.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, uh, then, oh, your favorite, your other favorite.
My other favorite thing, well, I heard from, um, I, it's Bill Bevins. I, I never get whether it's Bevins or Blevins, but I think it's.
No, it's Bevins, B-E-V-A-N-S.
Thank you. Anyway, I heard from Mr. Bevins, uh, who is a select board member in Bosque.
Yes, he is.
And he would like to perambulate with you. And I know how you like to perambulate. Um, so, I guess I'm asking when you'd like to do that.
Oh, like what we did with.
Like you did with Salisbury.
Salisbury, yeah.
You will have to swim across Walker Pond.
Well, I've been, I've been, you know.
Getting the, getting the stretches.
Working my, my breaststroke.
So.
I thought, I heard the backstroke was your favorite. So now it's the breaststroke.
Hey, you changed it up. So we have a boat to go across Walker Pond?
Um, he, he mentioned something about a boat. He says, oh, we might need a boat and I took it that maybe he had a boat, but.
So does that mean we can get in the boat with him?
You know.
Well, I have to, I will have to say that he's kinda related to me, not really by a former marriage for me.
That's what he told me, yeah.
Yes, oh, he told you that, okay, well, not, yeah, so.
So what's that said? Okay, you're gonna take care of it?
I can deal with it.
All right, there we go. I want you to perambulate.
Why are you worried that he's gonna sink the boat if he takes the other tube?
So Dee, I'll look up previous perambulations, which will help, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Show you where they were and what they did and so forth.
You didn't give me that the last time.
I, I, I didn't want you to know.
You can't stay on shore and fly in with a drone, check out what you're doing?
It'd be a way for me to see Walker Pond, I suppose, but anyway.
Walker Pond is beautiful.
Yeah, I understand it is.
Yeah, way out to the end at the dock, at the dam, where the rock goes all the way out, yeah, no, that's pretty neat out there.
So I'll get that to you and, uh, if you wanna, so you're gonna call him directly and I don't need to go back to him?
Oh, you can, you can.
Just tell me what you'd like me to do, I'll do it.
I'll call him, just tell him I'm, I'm volunteering.
Okay.
Can we say that word again? Perambulate, no.
Perambulate.
Perambulation.
It's a great word.
All right. So that moves us to abatement. Do you have them or do we need to postpone that for Russ?
No, Russ gave them to me and I am going to find them any moment now.
All right. Anything else you gentlemen wanna comment on while we wait?
No, um. Sunshine, sunshine to make it. Sunshine to make the hay grow.
That's what we need.
No, they said after this week, things are gonna turn around.
Yep.
That pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. Yeah, it's down the river now. Thank you.
See you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the abatement is for campground people that aren't there.
Really?
It's twelve thousand dollars total.
Wow.
And a lot of it.
Yeah.
Well.
Twelve thousand, oh, total, not just this stuff?
No, well, that should add up to the twelve. And a lot of it, of course, is more than one year, which is what makes it.
Wait. Twelve, twelve hundreds.
No, I think it's twelve thousand. It's up at the top, Dee, is it.
Oh, yeah, that's right, okay, all right.
Although we did have one that you had abated for five dollars and someone, and they sent a check in. So we reversed the.
Oh, good, we had that back in, oh, wow.
There is no way that adds up to twelve thousand dollars.
Cause that's what I, unless it's, does that include stuff we've done in the past?
Five, well.
Thank you, Dave.
I think you meant twelve hundred, maybe?
Nine-ish, no, this isn't, this is like barely a thousand.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
See, that's, I thought maybe that includes.
See, I didn't do that, so I don't know.
I thought maybe that includes previous stuff we've done.
I, I don't know, but that, that doesn't add up, so.
That, thank you, Dave, that's what I'm sitting there thinking, this doesn't add up, not with my good subject.
I see we're all taking twelve thousand dollars out of the campground, maybe we have a.
Russ just texted me, said twelve hundred dollars was the correct.
It didn't look like that would be the adding. I mean, I can throw it through quick.
Actually, so why don't we bring it to you next time?
But you, I think you're thinking, what I was thinking when you said twelve thousand, ooh, how do we explain that?
Well, I was a little surprised with that, but I just got, since I should have.
And twelve hundred makes sense for, for a monetary amount, it just didn't look like it was gonna add up to that anymore.
Well, if you notice, it's twelve thousand one sixty-eight point eight three zero zero cents. Now, we're very precise here.
Oh, that's, I didn't even notice that. I just was stunned at the twelve thousand. I was like, wait, these are only couples of hundreds.
Something went weird there.
Okay, perfect, okay, so that's, take care of that.
All right, so that moves us to correspondence.
Yes. I'll go to my correspondence area. And you should have, you have copies of most of what I'm gonna talk about and there are a few that came afterwards. You saw the letter from the resident regarding their concern with the land use coordinator, the, uh, oh, that was Russ.
Do you mean?
Code.
Code enforcement.
Yeah.
So, did that really happen? I'm not saying that they're wrong, that's not what I'm saying, I'm just like, i- is that something to look into a little bit?
I think you should, well, sorry, I, I was gonna say, I think that, I would expect you to tell me to have it looked in.
Okay, good, cause that's what I was going to say. I mean, we wanna treat everybody with the utmost respect and, and.
Right.
And courtesy.
And I thought it was a good letter, I mean, it was, it was courteous and, you know, it was.
And I can understand if there's a, like, I'm not, I'm not here to talk to you, cause I'm here to see what the public complaint is and document it sort of thing, but to.
But still.
But to not state this is what I am and who I am for the tech, like, that.
But why wouldn't you take the opportunity to ask some questions so whatever you're looking at, you can get? As, as we know, kids in life decide, we saw always two sides to every story, and there's where you find that middle ground.
And we aren't allowed to step onto someone's property that we're not invited to, but if they're trying to explain something and say, hey, come look at this, you can do that. Um, so.
That's how you work stuff out.
It's.
Well, they could.
I'm, I'm a little concerned about it, uh, but how, how much of what is what is?
Well, I think that we need to do a little more investigating. I don't think we've spoken with the, um, with the code enforcement officer.
I will say that.
And who will speak with him? Will it be you or Russ?
Russ and I can do that.
Okay.
That would be great.
Thank you.
And I will, I will say though, that the, uh, code enforcement that was, that was done, um, they wanted a bunch read, uh, and stated, but I will simply say that they have, uh, said that they are taking care of the, the issue that was brought forth and so I will leave it at that.
Should I, um, I could include this letter as an addendum in your minutes if that is something or if you wanna leave it.
I thi- I think it's probably more appropriate to leave it with the file for the particular enforcement action. Um, and if, if something comes about with the, with the code enforcement officer, then it could be included as part of that and more brought out then. But I, I think it's probably fine as is to leave it at that for now.
So the next couple of items is the dam that we spoke of with Lisa.
I, I, I'm saying I, 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 but it is the board's decision, so please chime in.
No, no, which part, which part?
Well, for, for how, how to handle the complaint and it saying, or I should say the letter and saying that it wants to be in all the, the public record, et cetera.
Let's see, let's see if we can get to the bottom of what kind of went down and then maybe we could decide after that. Let's, let's see, let's see if we can get to the bottom of what kinda went down and then maybe we could decide after that.
Yeah.
Like I said, there always, not that somebody doesn't feel you're always telling the truth, but there's two, everybody's gotta side.
Yeah.
So I think it's our job to look at the side and, and then we can decide what to do with it after that.
Agreed.
Sound good?
Yep, sounds good.
Alright.
Uh, so, um, the dam and the paving on Tyler Road, which is now done, so I guess we'll, you're all settled with that.
Have a good day.
Thanks for the new pavement.
Um, the next item that I gave you was just a copy of the dredge and fill wetlands permit application for the, for closed pin bridge. I had to sign it and have Wendy draw a check for the wetlands bureau, which um, you'll be approving somewhat shortly. And um, they're going to be coming up, uh, Mary will have to sign as far as the record keeper of the town. A copy will go with the conservation commission. Um, there is a meeting coming up on May eleventh, um, with the historical part of the, um, this project to note the historical aspects of, of the, um, project. And I just got a call today, um, they're trying to contact someone from the historical side, so I gave them the president's name, Barclay Corliss.
I was gonna say, Chris said that she was going to bring it to them at the next meeting, but let's make sure that we've also sent a, a copy and a request for that straight to them.
Um, yes, I think they know it, I've, I've heard, I've heard, because they also sent it to Dot Bur. But I, I will talk about, follow up with them later. Uh, the next item is that we are now registered again with, for our net metering. I had to do two different ones, couldn't combine them. I am very interested to see if they're actually gonna do net metering.
I think the PUC is interested in that too.
They were very surprised that it wasn't going that way. And they really helped me out a lot. And actually, this is the man from the New Hampshire Department of Energy.
Okay, Department of Energy as well, okay. And on, on that subject of power, um, I will mention that, of course, we are a part of the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire and uh, at town meeting, we did approve to enter and do our own community power. Um, we just, uh, Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire just recently held their annual meeting for all of the members and board members. And uh, I was put forth as a candidate for that and I am now a sitting board member of the Board of Directors there.
For the community power?
For community power. So Webster's voice will definitely be heard directly.
Well, you remember the little people along the way.
That's all I am, is a little guy. I just keep getting put places.
That's awesome.
So, uh, they will definitely be hearing what all of our concerns are as we go through. And they are, uh, so that does not change the way that, um, the appointments are from the town. Uh, Marty is still the member representative from the town and I'm the alternate member representative. Uh, and so when there is a members' meeting, it's Marty, not me, uh, that will be making his voice and his opinions known. Right now, that's looking like that's gonna be quarterly instead of what it has been as annually. And then on the Board of Directors meetings, which will be once a month, that will be me at this point.
And, and you're aware of, we had concerns by two different residents regarding their solar, and I saw that you had responded.
Mm-hmm.
And so people really are tuning in.
And I guess, I guess I'll cover that again. If you are somebody that is feeling that you want to opt out of this, you will absolutely be able to do that, but you can't do it now because there's nothing yet to opt out of. When that time comes, mailers will be sent out all over town, notices will be put up on the website, et cetera, so you will know about it. And I would expect that probably early spring or late winter of next year. Small possibility that, that this fall we could see something, but probably early next year.
Okay, thank you. Um, what you didn't have a copy of, we received a letter from National Grid, um, regarding herbicide use on their right of way. Uh, and they have explained what it is they're going to do and the chemicals they're going to use. I sent a copy of this to the Conservation Commission.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, along with the map. Um, I don't think this is anything unusual, I think it's.
I think we get this about every year.
Yeah, yeah. We also got a thank you letter from CASA for the money that, um, the town voted for them. This I might bring back next week, it's the, um, equalization.
Oh.
Calculations, not our equalization per se percentage, but it's like, it's in dollars. And how much that we have modified local assess valuation and that takes a little more time to understand, so I think I'll.
Okay, just, yeah, if you can send that to us for the next time.
Let you see it rather than tell you about it. Cause every time I get it, I go, how's that work?
Yeah, and then eventually we get to percentages, which is what everybody wants to know.
Right.
That will come, that usually comes more toward the summer.
Alright, and is that all of the correspondence?
Yes.
Perfect, so that moves us on to our very silent public comment because there aren't any.
Hey, you people be quiet out there.
Normally, we get, you know, at least one person to say something. But anyway, that moves us to motions and approvals, uh, so the meeting minutes.
Make a motion, we approve the select board April seventeenth meeting minutes.
Uh, public, non-public or both?
Both, how about both?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, uh, motions for payments.
Um, I have nothing for payments, other than I have things for you to sign.
Okay, so that's signing the documents.
So, and I also have, I could before I do that, um, there are a couple of land use change documents that Russ has given me, and bear with me while I, one of, one of them, um, he needed more information, so you signed this one, but here's an updated one that also needs signing.
That's the same thing, only that's different.
Well, he looks through that. I will note that, and the pen reminded me, uh, I went to a UNH class for the continuing education for representatives uh, on road maintenance and, uh, people that have actually worked on stuff in, in our town uh, and, uh, surrounding areas, uh, were part of the, the discussion panel and those teaching it. And, uh, very informative, very good, and, um, I'm exceedingly hopeful that I will be able to help Emmett project costs a little bit better for the CIP committee this year through our budgeting process.
Oh, good.
So hopefully that works out well.
So this is a current use application to put more land in current use. I believe they were missing, Russ had written to them, um. I'm not sure if it's.
Is that Russ?
That was probably Russ.
It's like you said his name to boom. That's too funny. Wouldn't it be cool if they could just chat at us?
Once it's filled out.
We can make that possible, but then.
Current use application, missing tax credit. Okay, not sure what that is, but, um, anyway, here's the signature on the least one.
That's not what he's talking about, oh.
David, you missed a page too, when you grabbed it.
Oh, yeah, that.
What was that, David, you missed a page?
What the heck is that?
I guess the application was missing for tax credit.
Oh, okay.
Just what he's telling me, yeah.
So there were, uh, is this the only one that we have?
You have another one, that you haven't seen.
So there were a, a couple different, uh, places that were listed and had been getting the credit, but didn't have an application on file. So Russ just reaches out to them to make sure we have an, an application.
Okay, that's right, okay, now I know where.
Okay, alright, there's nothing from this.
I know, I started doing that, yeah, I think I said something.
I'll just put it on top.
This one is a land use change tax bill, um, so Russ got the information from the assessors. What's going on at current use, what's still in current use and. The land use change tax is a whopping fifty dollars, so.
That's not much, they can't have current use.
No, it's only a, a fraction of an acre.
Oh my god, sorry.
If you sign on the right, I think, and I'll print your name on the left.
Oh, okay, I was gonna do it all.
Or you could do it, you'd probably print better than I do.
No, you write pretty well.
Well, I went to special tenements at school.
Yeah. No, I'm not talking to you. And I even put the date on, too.
Printing's pretty okay.
So, let's see.
I had teachers that tried to change me from left-handed to right-handed. And that happened until they met my mother.
Now, now.
That tenement chip's actually really good, it's just not my signature.
Yeah, your signature is right.
And this is the same type of thing, this is for, um, an application for must be veteran, veteran's tax credit. And so it's on the back, Dee.
Oh, so, oh, okay, so that's the property that we signed.
Uh, right, return the, it's on the reverse side.
Oh, on the side, oh, okay, alright, I'm just.
You said that was veteran's tax credit?
Yeah.
Hopefully I'm gonna give Russ back what he needs.
Here you go, sir.
Thank you for your service.
I also have a couple of release deeds, but since Russ isn't here to notarize it, I'll have to do these at the next meeting.
Okay, next, what's this?
That's for Dave, the.
The one that's not a check.
No, we can have that one, I'll take the check one, thank you.
Check one's for you.
Thank you.
Um, here is the manifest, the release manifest and the payroll. First payroll of the month, always the biggest one.
I mean, it's the first, you couldn't have worked that much this month.
I know, I'm exhausted. I think it's so nice of the town, just every couple of weeks they put money in my bank.
I know.
Oh, this is the really long one too, is this, this is the quarterly, is it?
Yeah, I think it has a fire, well, it has, does it have all the firefighters or just the officers?
I don't know, it is long. But yes, it has officer stipends and stuff in it too.
Yeah.
Tax maps. That's a lot of invoices for county check. Was it like a special assistant like helped for stuff or, cause I thought we already paid for that, which was the additional? I thought we just had a normal monthly upkeep fee for other stuff.
Um, there were some specialty type things. One of it was the police department's having trouble with their computers in the car and their card that talks to the.
Ah, okay.
I should've brought up the invoices, but would've made it too easy.
Oh, yeah, and we did pay health trust.
Yeah.
Pest services, which, uh, which building is it?
This one.
This one.
Yeah. We might be able to discontinue now that we kinda got it under control.
How much, is it just sixty-eight bucks?
Of the dispatch center, yeah.
What's that?
Sixty-eight bucks, is it every, every quarter?
No, that's, uh, monthly, monthly.
Yeah, 'cause I think even, we do it at our house and it's, I think it's four hundred dollars a year.
Really?
Yeah, but it saves from the carpenter ants taking my house away.
Well, and that, you know, I mean, there are advantages, there are, I mean, we were having a lot of problems with mice.
Yeah, and they, they, I think for the most part do a pretty good job.
I think they do a very good job.
Yeah.
You know, they were up in the ceiling over the town clerk's office, it was a little.
But especially a whole building.
So renewal on the firewall software. Which would be the, that's interesting. Oh, sorry, that, that's the, the part of the, the police infrastructure, Mr. Barrett, that's the RTM communications.
Uh, yeah, that's the, uh, remove the mystery. Believe it or not, is their name.
Alright.
Where'd these come from? It's good, you know, it's a meeting, I know, taped meeting, but I, I know, I wish we had the tapes. We still, somebody still does, but if they would, it was a really interesting meeting, every month we'd go over different things. Different, all kinds of stuff in the town, so I wish.
I think I, I almost think it may have been tailored to you.
Really?
Is there anything further for us to say?
Yeah, I just want to, um, and I was, I'm not gonna, I didn't think it was necessary to have non-public. But we did have a development today on a property that we'd sold. Where the owner has surfaced and is, came in to talk to us about it. So, um, I have talked to the attorney, he's going to handle it and you may hear more about it as time goes on.
So are we, are, the town already sold it to somebody else?
Yes.
That seems like a headache.
That's why we have the lawyers send out the notices.
Oh my god, I mean, how many years have we had that land? Probably five, six.
Yeah. Well, actually, um, no, 'cause I was here when, when, when the town took it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I was here, so it'd probably be about two.
So it's probably five or six years out of.
In, in the making, in a sense.
Yeah. However, you have to be behind three years or.
Before you, before you, you know, are subject to deed. Alright, anything further?
Now, for me?
Alright, I move that we close the meeting at eight twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. No, I don't want. So always a comedian.
Let's go push the buttons. We've been already heading to do that.